The 2023 Greater KPN Chamber of Commerce School Committee Forum. My name is Bob Visnick. I have traveled many miles from distant Rockport to moderate this debate. And it's great to be here with all of you. I'd like to thank Gloucester High School for for giving us the auditorium for this evening. Thanks to the drama program for the great equipment and thanks for 1623 Studios for broadcasting this event. This evening, we are going to go first from close to far and then from far to close when it comes time for the closing statements. Each candidate will have, when we get to the questions, each candidate will have up to 60 seconds to answer the question. And at my discretion, I'll allow you a little bit more time to finish your thought. But I can be a toughie. There is a time keeper and he will give 30 second warnings and then we'll give a stop sign, in which case, finish what you're saying and be done with it. We will allocate 60 seconds in a few moments for a brief opening and then 60 seconds for a closing statement. And again, that will go in reverse order. The questions this evening have been developed by the Greater KPN Chambers Government Affairs Council with input from our community and with questions from the Gloucester High School students. And thank you all for being here and for giving up your time. Thank you for everybody out in the audience. And for those out in TV land, this is an important process and and fun to be a part of it. There will be six candidates chosen and we have one candidate this evening who cannot make it. And that is Richard John Roberts Jr. He sends his regrets. So we're going to start with you, Bill. And I, here's the question for you. So you and I happen to be at Good Harbor Beach getting ready to get some candy. And you tell me that you're running for a school committee and I tell you that I've just moved to Gloucester. And I ask you to tell me a little bit about yourself and why you're running. And you have 60 seconds.
Thank you, Bob. The first thing I do is probably ask if you have any sunblock because I'm going to need that as I take my seat on the beach. But I would want to probably introduce myself. I was born and raised in Manchester by the sea. I'm a graduate of the Manchester Public School System. My wife Beth Ann and I have been married for 30 years. And we have lived in the same Western Ave home that we purchased shortly after being married. We are the proud parents of three children, Marley, Jackson, and Ruby, all of whom are graduates of the Gloucester Public Schools. I've been involved in the industrial world for most of my working life, first as a laborer in the heat treat industry, followed by a long stint in a managerial role as an operations manager. For the past 10 years, I've been a business development manager for the manufacturing rep firm covering the New England States. I've been involved in various civic activities outside of my time on the school committee, where I sit on the building and finance, as well as the program subcommittees. Those activities include being president of Gloucester Little League for eight years, which might be the toughest job in Gloucester. Director of Cape Anne Youth Basketball and have coached various sports at the youth and high school levels. I enjoy very much spending time with my family and friends and being a person who's willing to serve others. I'm also an avid reader, very average golfer, and someone who loves to create a well-manicured lawn. So nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Okay, Kathleen, my name is Bob and I like long walks on the beach where I meet you and you tell me about yourself.
Well, first, you're probably going to want to meet my dog because everybody wants to meet my dog when I'm on the beach, Morris. So I would tell you that I moved to Gloucester almost 30 years ago because my husband and I chose Gloucester to build our life. We both grew up in places. I grew up around Lake Champlain and he grew up around New York City on the water. And we love sailing. So we moved here because we love the diversity of Gloucester and we're just drawn to the beauty. We have a son who's a recent graduate of Gloucester High School. He went through the Gloucester Schools. We both, my husband and I both benefited greatly from kind of progressing through our education and value public education tremendously because without a solid foundation, no one has enough opportunities with which to make good choices and to have kind of a full life that people should have. I have a Bachelor of Science in Accounting and MBA in Finance. And that background in finance, I think, brings a unique perspective to the Gloucester School Committee. You know, planning for the short term and long term is really what I feel any organization has to do. I also have volunteered for the Gloucester Education Foundation since my son was probably three and a half years old. So I've been involved in kind of all the extra opportunities and innovative programs that Gloucester offers our kids because it's really important that we have opportunities, not just really great educational foundations, but also all the arts and robotics and all the things that make education the reasons for kids to really get excited about learning. So I currently am the Chair of the Gloucester School Committee. I succeeded Jonathan Pope, who was our terrific chair for a long time, and he looks very relaxed out in the audience tonight. And I have served as Chair of the Building and Finance Subcommittee for many years when I was first on and Chair of the Program Subcommittee. I've also, I'm on the School Building Committee for the New School East Veterans and I was previously on the West Parish Building Committee because I had background in finance and strategic management and some kind of facilities management. So I would tell you that I'm really passionate about public education and I'm passionate about having every child reach their potential and just really want to look forward to learning for their entire lives.
Thank you. Melissa, I normally see you in court, but now I'm seeing you on the beach. So tell me a little bit about yourself and why you're running.
Good evening. And if I, if I'm talking to you on the beach, it's probably to watch the beautiful sunrises that happen there every morning. It's a very common place for me to be in the summer and fall. My name is Melissa Texara Prince. I was born and raised in Gloucester, graduated from the Gloucester Public Schools in 1983. I am married to retired firefighter Jay Prince and our blended family includes two beautiful daughters and my son Kevin. We are blessed to have two grandchildren and one of my grandchild, I'm sorry, my granddaughter is now attending the Gloucester High School as a freshman, which is very exciting to me, but I look back and wonder where the years have gone, but here we are. My work experience is that I've been working for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts at the Gloucester District Court for the past 30 years, where I am Office Manager in the Clerk Magistrate's Office. My education includes a degree in paralegal studies. I have a degree in business management and I attended law school, received my Juris Doctor degree and passed the Mass Bar in 2007. I am also Chair of the Gloucester Licensing Board, where we issue licenses for alcohol and inns and hotels and entertainment, which is a fun volunteer position for me. I've had the opportunity to work with Chris Sekaranza, who was up here previously to us coming up. And there's a lot of fun in volunteering for the city. So if anyone has time, I've just given a plug to maybe reach out to one of those positions and volunteer and help out Gloucester. I've been on the school committee for 16 years. That's a long time and it's given me a lot of experience. Here in Gloucester, I currently Chair the Building and Finance Subcommittee, but I've also chaired the Personnel Subcommittee, where I was responsible for negotiating many contracts over the past years. In addition to Gloucester, I also sat on the North Shore Vocational School Committee, which then turned into the Essex Tech School Committee. I sat on that committee for nine years and became Chair for two years. Wonderful experience getting to know the value of vocational and technical education. I enjoyed building that new facility and bringing two schools together and having the opportunity to witness students firsthand, getting a first-class education and opening that opportunity to Gloucester students. So it was a really good move for Gloucester to keep in that program. So many great opportunities coming out of that school, which is now having an impact on what we're doing in our schools, which is exciting. I am a strong advocate for children. In law school, my studies focused on juvenile law and family law. I learned at my young age or the situation that I grew up in, that having the voice of others, being able to speak on your behalf, produces good results. I had the opportunity to sit in court with Judge Harrison, the late Judge Harrison, and for those of you who know him, know that children was his priority. So I learned from him that I wanted to be a strong advocate and continue that work. And that's the type of work I do on the school committee. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Laura.
Are you running into me on the beach?
What's that?
Are you running into me on the beach?
I am. At sunrise.
I'm not there at sunrise. No. If you run into me, if you run into me on the beach, I look at you for five seconds and then I look for my children.
I don't have them.
Sorry?
I don't have them.
I don't. I'm Laura Weeson. I moved here 12 years ago with my husband and we then had two children who were both born here, who are both students at Beeman Memorial Elementary School. I'm originally from New Jersey and before moving to Gloucester, I had a whole different life. I was a television news and documentary producer, which is great training for asking questions and doing research. And as Jason Gross said earlier, asking questions people don't often expect and waiting for like real genuine answers. And that's been very useful on the school committee. Currently, I'm the Secretary of the School Committee. I am the Chair of what we call the Ad-Hoc Communications Subcommittee. And I'm also the Chair of the Program Subcommittee. And on programs, which is the Subcommittee that deals quite a bit with policy, I was very proud last year to work with my team and with the administration on a new attendance policy, which I think will really encourage students to come and not penalize them when they don't, but figure out the reasons for them to come. Sorry, encourage them to come instead of penalizing them for not coming. My work on the school committee has been a little bit of baptism by fire. My first term was during the COVID pandemic. And in that same year, we hired our new superintendent. And I'm very proud of the teamwork we've all had through two school committees that I've been on in getting, working together, listening to each other, disagreeing with respect and coming to really good conclusions and the best for Gloucester students, which is my priority. I'm a deep, deep believer in public education and making sure that all students and all families have access to high-quality education as we have here in Gloucester. And I am running for my third term. Thank you.
Thank you. And I misspoke earlier. We have two candidates not here this evening. Keith Minio is also not here. We move on to Jeremy.
Hello, I'm Jeremy McKeen and I would encourage you not to jump off the bridge into the stream at Good Harbor. I might get caught in the riptide. But my name is Jeremy and I am a 22-year teacher and parent. I have three kids in the Gloucester School System, one at Beeman, one at O'Malley and one at the high school. And my wife and I moved here 15 years ago to raise our kids and to start a life. And I'm running because I love teaching. I love teachers. I love serving students and working in the community. And I'm, I'm running because I also love the city and I want to serve as a part of this team, which will guide things. And I've also been teaching at a vocational school. So the vocational trades and the technical trades interest me in terms of developing them and working with the next generation in terms of not debating whether it's college or career, but college and career. And I've worked for the union at a city level and a state level. I've worked with several committees throughout the years, not only on curriculum, but on things around the school. I've been a coach. I've advised clubs. I've been a 504 coordinator. And I strongly believe, as they do, in public education and in serving the public and making sure that these kids are fed and taught and taken care of and that also the school staff is taken care of from the top down.
Thank you. Okay, our first two questions this evening are from Gloucester High School students. And we will start with Kathleen on the first question. So Gloucester Public School students are very diverse in their interests. How will you support additional funding for programs such as theater, band, arts and other creative groups who feel like their programs are underfunded?
Well, the budget process is very complicated, but we do always consider what, where the needs are. I was on the committee when we actually used to have a part-time drama and theater teacher. And that person also did all the performances and they did an amazing job, but they really had to struggle to have enough time to work with the kids. And also students that wanted more during the day. It was not an opportunity for them. So I was there when we really pushed to have that position be brought into the budget on a full-time basis. We have also added music at the middle school on a full-time basis, where kids can actually choose to do band the entire school year, where previous to that, they would have to rotate through different kind of specialists during a particular part of their schedule. So over time, we've added different things as we've seen the need and there's been some flexibility in the budget and some, and real pushing from, hearing from parents about those particular requests. I think the arts and, you know, so many of the other things like robotics and things that make Gloucester's education program very unique and really, quite honestly, in many ways, better than a lot of our surrounding districts and other districts. Keep us on the map and keeps our, keep our kids engaged. And so I would support, you know, any, any kind of new interest that they bring forth. And we all try to figure out what those trade-offs are when we finalize the budget.
Thank you. Melissa.
Thank you. I'm a huge supporter of drama and the arts. When I got on the committee back in 2008, it was when the market crashed and our budget crashed. And we actually had to go back and take funding out of our budget due to 90 cuts from the state. And the music and the plays were probably one of the first things cut. And it was a very depressing time. The school committee worked for a few years not having those programs, but once the, once the budget started developing in a more positive way, we started to bring the programs back little by little. So what I would do is strongly advocate, like we do every year during budget season. Our budgets conversations start to develop in November, which is going to happen real soon for us for the next fiscal year. The budget process forces us to look at every line item and see what's important. And I can tell you that this is a priority, not only for me, but it's been a priority for the committee as a whole while I've been on the committee, is to get these programs up. So building relationships with the mayor and having the mayor and then city council members understand the importance of these programs is something that is critical in budget development. And I am one who always reaches out to anyone that will listen to talk to me to give us money. So that's what I would do.
Thank you. Laura.
I think that the arts and theater and music in Gloucester Schools, since my children have been in Gloucester Schools, has been a real high point, a real shining point in Gloucester Schools. As Melissa said, I see on the committee that all of us are always interested in finding whatever resources we can to support, to support more and more funding for the arts. This room, in fact, there's going to be a study to improve the audio, to see how, how we could do that in a cost-effective way to allow for more, for more performance and more theater in this room at a more high quality, at a higher quality. Many people may not know that band in this district starts in fourth grade. Fourth graders are able to go over to O'Malley after school and participate in band in fourth and fifth grade and then into the middle school. So we have a very effective and I think productive partnership with Gloucester Education Foundation. And they have helped in the past year, they have helped ensure that all of the elementary schools had school plays, which hadn't been the case in years past. As far as finding money in the budget, you know, it's, it's always a challenging moment, but we are, Gloucester Schools is very creative. The administration is very creative at finding grant funding and looking for where we can add more and more to broaden the education our students are getting here in Gloucester Public Schools.
Jeremy.
Music and arts have been, have saved my life and have been guiding beacons in my life since I was very little, since I was baby Jesus at nine months old. And I, in a former life, was a musician and an actor and I've seen my kids on stage. My son plays in the band that Laura mentioned and they've all done theater. And he's, my two daughters dance and do theater. And so music and arts should be a part from pre-K to college. And I've seen, you know, just wonderful plays here on this stage and at Beeman and O'Malley. And so I've, I, you know, would be the hugest advocate for music and the arts and what they bring our students. And also every aspect of theater needing funding, not just as an elective, but as a mainstay. And so when it comes to music and arts, you know, the fact that they started fourth grade and pick an instrument and they stick with it is, is just this beautiful thing. My son picked trombone and I thought, you know, who's going to stick with trombone from fourth grade on? And yet he's a sophomore and playing trombone at the football games. And it's just, it's wonderful. My other, my middle child, she's going to be part of the play at O'Malley and she's got a starring role. So these are things that as parents, we take interest in, but as school committee and as, as teachers are paramount to their education.
Thank you. Okay.
Yes, the problem with going last is everything that you've wanted to say has probably already been said by those.
Don't you hate that?
Coming up with something original might be a little difficult, but as someone who was always kind of on the athletic side of things, I never really had an appreciation of the arts. Even when my kids were in school, I didn't go to a lot of school plays, didn't, you know, heard the darksides once in a while. But I think the two years that I've spent on the school committee has given me much more appreciation, to the point where I'm just an absolute huge fan of the work we do in the, in the arts and the music and the theater programs here at the high school and at the elementary schools. They do some great stuff. There's a lot of very dedicated people within our schools to those programs. And I just think they're absolutely critical to having a well-rounded, a well-rounded student body. And they really represent the school well. I think of the darksiders and the work that they do, you know, the music that they put on. And it's really a point of pride, I think, for the Gloucester Public Schools to, to see organizations out there in the public doing that type of work. I think of the Christmas concert I came to last year. I think the middle school played and then the high school played and I was like, wow, there's a lot of talented young people in Gloucester. And obviously a supporter of that type of stuff and will remain so throughout the next two years. So thank you.
Thank you. Melissa, we are going to start with you for the second part of this Gloucester High School student question. Many students have expressed the tardiness policy, which unfairly punishes students who are late and as a consequence have to miss a game or performance. How will you work with the administration and students to address this concern?
Thank you. I feel like I might take a little bit of Laura's thunder here because that's something she's worked very hard on and we as a committee did. I would let the students know that we have a new policy that just came out of the school committee a few months back, where we looked at our attendance and knew that there was an issue with attendance and all that's going on in the world. Kids have stopped coming to school to some respect and decided that we wanted to take a different path as opposed to punishing students that do not come to school. We flipped the conversation to be, what can we do to bring you to school? What can we do in school to interest each and every student so that they want to come to school? That conversation happened with the school committee through Program Subcommittee and some consultants that we brought in. And at first, I'll be honest, I was a little bit mesmerized of the idea of kids having an unlimited amount of school days off and not really being punished. But that's not how it turned out to be. We did change the rules. But now we talk to students, find out why they're not coming to school and do everything possible to encourage them to come to school. So I'm sure Laura will tell you a little bit more about it because she worked on it firsthand. But it's probably one of the most impressive things the school committee has done in the past year is wanting to engage with kids and get them to come to school, keep them in school with their interest. And that's something that I'm proud of to be on the school committee when that happened, that change.
Thank you. Okay, Laura.
So as I mentioned, as Melissa mentioned, we do have a new attendance policy now, which is, it's really a sea change from what, from what we had done in the past, which is meant to motivate and encourage kids to come to school and take away barriers to coming to school. So for instance, there used to be something here in the high school called attendance fail. If you missed a certain number of classes, you would automatically fail the class. And we had some really, really interesting data given to us from a group called Attendance Works that told us how ineffective that is frankly at encouraging kids to come. And the point is, as, as we often say at every meeting, our superintendent says, every day matters. And so every single day matters. So we have worked really hard to come up with a new attendance policy. On the tardiness issue, which is what I think the question was, I know, and I've heard firsthand from some Gloucester High students about how that impacts sports in particular and, and missing games. And I believe that that's been changing as part of this new attendance policy, but that's an administrative, you know, that's something the administration here, I think, was developing as part of this new attendance. We all have agreed that we want students to be encouraged to be here. And we understand, I know some students have told me when the bridge is up or when, you know, there are things happening at home that are unavoidable, it's hard to get here. So I would say I know that Principal Cook and all the administration is aware of that and is working in all the ways possible to break down the barriers to getting here and to coming to school on time.
Thank you. Jeremy.
Yes, as a former coach, I coached soccer for 16 years and loved it. And, you know, tardiness was something that if a kid has an invested interest at the high school or middle school level, you know, you squeeze that a little bit. And for the kids that aren't invested, they may not see why tardiness is such a big deal. It's different for younger kids at the elementary level because, you know, if, if I'm running late and that reflects on the kid, that's not the kid's fault. But at a higher level, when these, these students need to know that in the real world, you only get so many chances. In school, you get unlimited chances. And so at the high school, we have, you know, you would have a detention and so many detentions, you'd have suspension. That doesn't, I don't think that translates well for the younger set. And so, so I think to give the high school the idea of, look, and the workforce is can't be a mainstay. Colleges have policies of missing so many classes. But I, I'm also against the idea of penalizing kids for so much of the tardies. And I think there should be more grace towards, the everyday does matter and they should take this seriously, but that there is a grace level for, for the younger kids. And as they get older, that they, we put a little more pressure on it. And again, I'm also concerned about students who are not as invested seeing that as a punishment rather than as something that's just part of daily life.
Thank you. Phil.
Yeah, the one thing that sticks out in my mind is someone that drove three kids across the bridge every day to Gloucester High School, is that the parents also have some skin in the game. You know, like it's important that parents recognize, hey, the school expects my kid to be there on time. And so I think we have to put a little bit of that on the parents. The data shows that if you miss 10% of the, of the school year, then you're going to get behind. There's no ifs, ands, buts about it. 18 days, if you miss 18 days, you're gonna, you're gonna fall behind. It's going to be very difficult for you to catch up. So I think those are the two things that kind of stick out to me. One, parents have to have some skin in the game. Two, as Jeremy said, kids need to be invested. Hey, if I know I got a football game or a soccer game or a school play after school and I need to be on time, well, then that's important that, that you recognize that. And that's just taking responsibility for yourself. And I think, I think it's okay to, to promote that. I also think that we've developed some attendance teams where if it's, it's a chronic issue or if it's, it looks like it's something more than just a kid being late every day or a student being late every day, then, you know, maybe we try and engage the family on the importance of, you know, being in school. So all important stuff and it's a legitimate question though. So appreciate it.
Okay, so I'm very familiar with the tardy policy because I've Okay, um so I'm very familiar with the tardy pos- policy because I've um seen it firsthand. Uh and it does have an impact on on a student and sometimes it's out of a um a student's control. Uh and oftentimes it's not. And so I do think having our policies that reflect real life, that. Um that there's expectations and there are consequences. And um if you are, I remember. Elementary school where they were trying to encourage parents to get the students to school on time and they phrased it such as. Imagine you are six or seven years old and you walk into class and class has begun and all eyes turn on you. How do you think your child feels? Right? So really kind of turning it around to parents so they understood. The situation they might be putting their student in. Um that said, I do think and I have advocated for um. Some grace, some some leniency, some listening to the reasons. I mean, we don't know what's going on in people's homes all the time and we don't know. Uh, you know, we all get, you know, adults get a flat tire or or things like that. And sometimes those things happen. And so a zero tolerance, I don't think is the answer either. Um so I think as long as kids take it seriously. And understand and really do their best to be there, but something happens out of their control, we should really um provide those exceptions sometimes.
Thank you. Okay, the third question, we're gonna start with Laura and it is as follows. If elected or re-elected to the school committee, you will be faced with budgetary constraints. Do you agree with what has been done regarding school consolidation up to this point? And what are your views on the possible consol-? Consolid- consolidation of Beeman and Plum Cove schools?
Thank you. Um so. East Gloucester and the Veterans Memorial School were consolidated into one school this year. Um and given uh the state of the East Gloucester building, which was really. Not good, really sort of uh no longer um sustainable. Um I think the decision to consolidate schools and to build one. Big, beautiful new building with thirty million dollars of funding from um the Massachusetts um school building authority was a great one. I think that um our students deserve high-quality facilities with. With access to technology and good ventilation systems and all the facilities that. Um new schools can offer that schools built in the forties just simply don't as much as we love them. So I think that was a good decision. I think it's a beautiful school and I think the the team there is working to create a real community. That's 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 a wonderful thing. Um I think we need to look, I'm a Beeman parent. And um those schools, Beeman and Plum Cove are aging quickly and um luckily they're still in decent shape and our students can be educated while there. But these buildings have have a timeline. They have a lifetime and um. We can't build, we couldn't build five brand-new school buildings. So I think having built two, um it's. It's our due diligence to look at what it will mean to the Beeman and Plum Cove communities. To build a new building and to see how that would work from a from a demographic perspective, see how many students there would be. And um to move forward with that research, um seeing what we find and being open to the possibility of consolidating those schools.
Jeremy?
Yes, uh you know, one of my heroes, Henry David Thoreau, said simplify, simplify. And I said, Henry, what what about just one simplify, you know, two's overkill. But uh so. Kids can learn in pods and, you know, like uh learning can happen uh where I teach in Lynn. Uh the high schools are overflowing and they just keep adding pods and pods and pods. Um that shouldn't be the future that we're giving our children. Um and I don't have uh the budgetary insight for Beeman and Plum Cove, but um if. If it makes the most sense, uh I would love a consolidation. Uh East Veterans is amazing. I mean, I can't imagine a more beautiful building in in Gloucester for our children. And um consolidating made the most sense and I live in East Gloucester and U G S is uh, you know, right up the hill. And and, you know, thinking about Fuller years ago and and how it was making kids sick and, you know, we need to take care of our children. And uh and work towards, you know, if we if we have Plum Cove join Beeman. And in the future, we start getting things in motion for a a a bigger elementary school. Uh or uh adding onto the building. Uh if it makes sense and it's efficient, then uh that would be something I'd be interested in. Uh in in researching and studying and uh and so. So I look forward to that. Thank you.
Phil?
Yeah, uh if I could just play back um Laura's answer, I'd probably do that. Um I think that. Uh I've done some study and these buildings have a certain life expectancy. I think that East Gloucester and Veterans had outlived that life expectancy. I think it was the right thing to do um to to build a new East Veterans School. I think eventually the same thing might happen with uh Beeman and Plum Cove. And I I I think it's worth supporting. I I I do think that the key piece is also the financial piece, you know. Can you get money from the state? Um how much can you get from the state to support a new build? And I know that sometimes uh it might not be the most popular decision with a lot of people, but. I think it's okay to have kids in beautiful new buildings with the latest technology, a healthy building. And um to really help them get off to a good start, especially at the elementary school level. So. I think it's gonna happen. I think it's uh, you know, down the road and. Uh if it makes financial sense when that time comes, then we'll definitely cross that bridge. So.
Thank you.
So in uh probably five or six years ago, we had a discussion about, well, I guess it was longer than that. Because it was before we um submitted the statement of interest for East Gloucester. Uh we had a discussion that building five, you know, four more schools after West Parish would take. I don't know, twenty-five, thirty years. And we knew our schools would not last that long. The other piece is to have a school that is right-sized today. We could never have rebuilt East Gloucester and had circulation for vehicles and buses under today's standards. Um East Gloucester had, did not have certain rooms. You needed to add those rooms. They take up, you know, square footage. Um so consolidating the school was not about like saving in our operational budget every year. It was about saving in facilities and and building budgets, right? When you go out to the community. You wanna go out to the community to to the most efficient way of accomplishing providing these lovely new. Appropriate learning environments for students. Um and so that's really the driver, I think, of the consolidation. Um in addition to having limited space and when you're trying to rebuild. Um I also, you know, feel strongly that teachers and people in general, if you're in an organization, do better when you have more colleagues to share ideas with. And to share projects with and um and move things forward. And and so our teachers and staff. Equally benefit from being in this lovely new building because they do not have a lot of the challenges that they had before. Um so, you know, I can only imagine how much happier they are with bright light. Uh clean things, bathrooms that are multiple bathrooms instead of just one. I mean, there's just very basic things that a new building. You know, provides the right thing for.
Thank you. Melissa?
Thank you. Um so do I believe in school consolidation? Yes, I do. But I can tell you that I didn't always take that position. Um I began to feel comfortable about school consolidation when I did my work at um Essex Tech. Because we took the North Shore Vocational and the Essex Aggie, which were two very um. Very prestigious schools in their own ways because of what they offered and decided to bring them together. And that was a very difficult decision. Um on both sides, being the agricultural side and the vocational side that that became this beautiful building. So going through that experience helped me understand the value and the need for consolidation. Um when I got on the school committee here, we were talking about the plan for effective learning communities and the plan to go forward to to um consolidate. And I hesitated because like many in this community, I do like the idea of small schools and teachers knowing. The students and having that 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 camaraderie in a smaller version. Um but learned that you can have that same tone in a bigger school based on the way they're designed. Uh schools are old. Um Plum Cove and Beeman are expired. I actually wanted to do Beeman before we consolidated East Vets, but Jonathan Pope, through his guidance. Talked me through and decided to support these veterans being the next school, but Beeman has some some tough issues. Um the D P W has done an excellent job in keeping it going, but the time is coming quickly. Where we're gonna have to decide what we can do and not only what we should do as far as consolidating or not, but what can this community afford? And what would be the best outcome?
Thank you. Okay, the fourth question, starting with Jeremy. Support for educators. With increased pressures facing our educators. How will you, as a member of the school committee, support our educators? And how can we work towards a living wage for our educators?
Thank you. Uh as an educator myself, uh I've taken note over the past twenty-some years. Uh who supports educators and then who really supports educators. And I've been able, I've been privileged to work with the union on a city level and a state level. I've seen. Years without a contract. I've um. I've seen, you know, plenty of of wonderful paraprofessionals in my classroom and inclusion teachers. And uh I've seen teachers taken care of. Um I think it's just the ongoing work of this committee to take care of educators as they have, uh to provide. Healthcare and uh benefits and uh a living wage for the teachers who have, you know, they have an advocate in their union. To argue that for them, but there's also uh so much that the school committee can do within the confines of a budget. And there's only so much that um that the city can can afford. And that's unfortunate for the system that sees that. We need to respect um not up-and-coming. Uh educators, but educators who've been looked over for a while. And so that's a new challenge that I think the school committee faces. And so, you know, my, just a. Flat answer would be that um that everything, we should, we should. Be looking towards doing everything we can for educators all the time and school staff.
Okay. So and by the way, this is the last question, so if you wanna start to think about your closing statement after you've answered.
All right. Um well, I think it's an important question and it's certainly an important question in Gloucester right now. I I I think the one thing that, when we use the word support, what exactly does that mean, you know, to to? To the to the teachers and to the to the people that pay for the, you know, the teacher salaries, I think you have to look at. Not only pay, but what are we making the teachers feel valued? Does the school committee, does the administration, do citizens put a high value on? The teaching profession, not only from a pay perspective, but do they make them feel valued? Do they offer the right professional development? Do they offer the things that teachers need to help them do their job effectively? And feel good about coming to the Gloucester Public Schools every day. The 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 one thing that's kinda kinda tripped me up a little bit is the fact that, as Jeremy kind of alluded to. Salaries are salaries, the pay portion of that is a part of a bigger pie. Uh that that the school committee has to figure out with regards to the budget. And um. You know, I think it's important to the citizens of Gloucester that we try and uh be prudent and measured with uh what what, you know. Where we are on that and um that we be good caretakers of. The monies that we have to support our schools and our teachers. So.
Thank you.
Um yeah, I'll echo um what Bill said. He he said a lot of very important things there. Um. I think one of the things that's been a real focus in many years has been professional development because. As different learning um situations or challenges come up or mental health challenges come up for our students, some anxiety, there's just been. Um many different things that have evolved over the years as to new challenges and teachers need to be able to have those tools to cope with that. And and do the best by our students. You know, we've advocated for funding at the state level. The Student Opportunity Act brought more money into Gloucester because we um have particular. Reasons to need to warrant more money. Um that's another way to, you know, kind of try to um ease the burden of the budget. Um we've also increased starting pay to attract teachers to hopefully bring in, you know, new um. Teammates for our teachers to be able to bring in new um people that have recently graduated and got all of. The newest thinking on on how you approach literacy and and all that stuff. Um we do a lot of. Teachers um teach the teacher or I can't remember what the phrase is, but a lot of our teachers actually run some of our professional development. So when we hear about the ongoing plan for district improvement from the superintendent. You know, that is our purview to um review that and ask the questions of how our teachers being incorporated into that. And they have an, and I am proud to say they have an extremely active role. There, our teachers are brought in. Um and they often lead the curriculum reviews. In fact, they do lead curriculum reviews and they lead in many, many ways. So that is definitely a way of showing respect. Um and appreciation for what they do because. We have some amazing teachers and when they come before us, they are smiling and so proud of what they're doing for kids. So. Hopefully we are meeting on every level of pay um in all those other ways that we show our appreciation and respect for what they do.
Living wage, um that's a new term that we're hearing this year and causing a little bit of a ruckus in our community and rightfully so. Um when I got on the committee years ago and we started um our negotiation process. Um we took one or two groups at a time and tried to do the best we could for those groups in bringing up the their salaries. Um knowing that they may not be be as competitive to either um surrounding districts. Being Manchester or Rockport, um which is tough to compete with, or our DOT communities where we have similarities. And um the paraprofessionals have, are one of the last groups. And here we are having this conversation at a time where our economy is struggling, um inflation is high. Um and we're put in a position where we value our staff and excellent staff that we have. And we're be put in a position where our budget is driving the conversation, not necessarily what we want the outcome to be. Um so we're doing our best with that, as you know. Um like Kathy and Bill said, there's other ways to support teachers. Besides the professional development, um which is key and which we've invested a lot of money in. Um our student population, our English language learners are now um above ten percent of our population. Uh special ed population is twenty-four percent of the student population. We have a lot of students with social and emotional needs, so the investments that we've been making, which is a good portion of our budget. Is the support for the teachers and the staff. Um the more support we have for students, the classroom runs. In a better way with those supports. Um so we we as a school committee forced. The salary increase versus the services and that's an ongoing conversation which um we're all committed to in trying to get the best for student outcomes. And to show the staff that we appreciate them and are doing our best to give them not only financial support, but the. Support with support services as well.
Thank you. Laura?
So educators are the bedrock of what we do. Obviously, this is the business of education. It's not a business, but. Um and we have to find, I think, all of my colleagues, now that I'm going last, there's a a balance between. Financial support and also, you know, respect and the ways that our teachers are leading our, as I think Kathy mentioned, the curriculum development. I think that um one of the things that has been touched upon here is that. Teachers and educators in general, which are more than teachers in our schools. Fill so many roles. And so as we develop more public uh professional development and as we continue to support them. Through um developing new curriculum, through them trying out and bringing to the administration what they wanna be teaching. The ways that they think they can reach our students um more effectively. Those to me are also kinds of very integral support that brings our teachers and our students and teaching and learning together. Um to improve all. Um supporting our teachers financially is something we work. Very hard on every year and we balance that with the needs of the taxpayers and the people who are paying for our budgets. And for all the new, not new, but the increased need for social, emotional supports and um other parts of our of our budget that also require. Um substantial investment, financially investment uh that we that we have to give every year. So. Um I think that this team and this administration has been hugely supportive and respectful and appreciative of our amazing staff. And what they've been through in these past years. Um and I hope that we just continue to work together. And I hope that we just continue to work together with our teachers, with our educators, with our paraprofessionals, to do the best we can for them and for all Gloucester Public School students.
Thank you. All right, that concludes the question portion of this evening, and so it's time to hear from you and tell our vast studio audience, as well as those people in cable TV land and the voters, why they should vote for you for school committee. Jeremy?
Great, thank you. And thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and to Bob and to Sixteen Twenty-three and everyone in the audience who's been here since seven. It's been an honor and pleasure. As a teacher and parent, I'm asking for your vote because I'm willing to put in the work and I'm willing to learn and study and be part of a team that I highly respect and have studied since I've been interested in possibly running for school committee. And it's, you know, to bring my talents to a group and to say, "Look, I want to serve. I want to serve students. I want to serve the teachers. I want to serve Gloucester." You know, Gloucester's been wonderful to my family. Gloucester is, you know, my, I was not raised in Gloucester, but my children were, and they're all taking part in a wonderful educational system that I want to make sure is not only the best for them, but for their classmates and for the teachers and the school staff, everybody from the top down. And so, so I'm asking for your vote because I know what it's like inside education in terms of being in the classroom. I know what it's like. I've seen, you know, I've been through several superintendents and principals and administrators, and I've seen teachers that have stayed the course, and I know what it's like to have to provide for students. And then as a parent, I know what it's like from the inside of the house and apartment where, you know, students deal with things like being tardy and not having the right snack and all of those things, from small to important things like music and arts and AP classes and sports. So I'm asking for your vote, and I'm willing to do the work, and I really want a chance to serve Gloucester, a place that we love as a family.
Thank you. Laura?
So again, thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and to Sixteen Twenty-three and to the high school, to everyone who stayed the course tonight here. I am asking for your vote because I care so very much about our schools. I have two children in our schools now, in elementary now. I'll probably have a middle schooler next year. And I believe that offering a high-quality, supportive environment and place to learn is about the most important thing you can give to any child and any young adult. And I believe in public education as the best way to do that and the best way to sort of create new citizens and create new adults who are doing everything from electronics to research to biotech. I volunteer regularly in the schools as a parent, and I see the incredible work that happens every day, from teachers, from paras, from adjustment counselors. And I feel that I've learned so much in my first two terms, my first four years on the committee, that I have even more to give now as far as just understanding how we budget and how our policies work and creating new policies that can help improve. This year, we're going to be challenged, we're going to be struggling with the new social media policy and electronic device policy, another hugely significant policy that will really make a difference in how we operate as a school system and how our students learn. So I ask for your vote because I support our schools and I support our students and I support our faculty and our staff, and I support my teammates, and I'm a good team player, and I really enjoy working with them to make the best decisions for Gloucester schools. Thank you.
Thank you. For all that are here and watching at home and for having this focus on us tonight and being able to convince you to vote for us. Sixteen years I've been on the committee, and I have loved and enjoyed every minute of it. Even when I don't agree with those in the community, I learn from conversations that are tough and that may not be the path that I was on. So my work is not done here. I want to advocate for children, your children, my children. I believe that education is the foundation of community development. We have an obligation to provide each and every student that walks through our doors every opportunity that they need or that they want, so that when they walk out the door as an adult, they are productive citizens and hopefully can find a home and stay in Gloucester and help continue all the good that we have in our community. I take my role as being a voice of families very seriously, but also balance that with taxpayer concerns. So every vote or every conversation that I have, I try to bring the passion that I have of the students and their needs versus the concerns of the community when they say that the schools aren't doing enough. But what I've learned and what I want to continue to say is the schools are doing a lot of good work, and for some reason, that messaging doesn't always get out to the community, or it gets challenged in a way that the facts become distorted. Our schools are doing excellent. We can improve our scores, yes, but the schools, the staff that we have, the leadership that we have, the programs that we are infusing into our schools now are wonderful, and I like and want to continue to be part of those conversations. We've been on the committee for a while. Jeremy will be welcoming us soon, but we stay here because we like what we do. My granddaughter's in high school. I have a vested interest, but even if she wasn't here, I would still want to continue to this work because I believe in the value of advocating for students and making sure that they have every opportunity possible to be who they want to be. So I would appreciate your vote on November seventh. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I, too, have been on the committee for a long time, fourteen years. I, you know, was passionate when I started running for office, and nothing, nothing has replaced that passion. I always say, when talking about new programs or some of my voluntary work with the Gloucester Education Foundation, there is nothing like that aha moment for students, that, you know, maybe they try singing for the first time, or maybe they do an experiment that, you know, they just never really thought, or they do the school play. I mean, talking about shy kids, and then your whole class does a school play, and everybody is a team and they do it. Those are the moments that make a child really enjoy and have their own self-discovery. That passion and those experiences make them be braver the next time. I just feel that our schools are fabulous schools. I do know that we always will have things to improve. No organization ever has nothing to improve. You always need to be evolving and looking for better ways of doing it, and we continue to do that. Our current superintendent, Ben Lummis, is, you know, the most compassionate, phenomenal leader. He is a true educator to his very core, and I am honored to both work on a committee that works really well and respectfully. There are no fireworks at our school committee meetings between us. We have very good discussions, and I think we learn from each other and we learn from the perspectives we bring, and we really do, I think, produce better results because of that. We listen to each other and we listen to the community. So I would be honored to serve another two years. I would be honored to have your vote on November seventh. Thank you.
We've had some robust discussions, maybe. That's a different thing. First off, I want to say thank you to the Cape Town Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring tonight's debate. I also want to commend my fellow candidates for their measured and thoughtful answers to tonight's questions and their commitment to public education here in our city. Doesn't surprise me at all. I've been in, you know, literally two years' worth of meetings with three out of four of the people to my right, and they're all very measured, thoughtful, you know, people that really care about public education, and it's been a pleasure for me to serve with them. I've only been on the committee for two years, and it's been some of the most rewarding work that I've ever done. It's not that easy. I thought, "Oh, I'll get on the school committee and, you know, it won't be too bad, you know, I'll be able to figure it out." It's a lot of work. It's hard work. You've got to grind it out, and you don't always see the results right away. But what you do see is a group of people that are trying to lead a district in the right direction. I don't want to heap too much praise on Superintendent Lummis, but I would certainly agree with Kathy in the fact that he's got a short-term vision and a long-term vision. And I just have the utmost respect for him and the work that he's doing in his school, in the schools here. As I mentioned, there's a steep learning curve with regards to the mechanics of how the school committee operates, and I feel like I've done a respectable job of learning, of diving in on that and asking pragmatic questions. I think that's half the job, is asking the right questions about, you know, what's before you. And I try to bring some solutions to the table as a sitting member on both the Building and Finance Committee and the Programs Committee. I've been accused of being the largest, literally the largest cheerleader for the Gloucester Public Schools, and I believe wholeheartedly in the Gloucester Public Schools. I believe in both the short- and long-term vision as we continue to build a high-quality district with the bar set high for all of us, not just the students, but the people that are on the school committee, the administrators, the teachers. Let's have a high bar. Let's not be afraid to say, "Hey, we can get there." I also believe our schools are filled with terrific educators, administrators, and support personnel that make the Gloucester Public Schools a place where students can feel safe, valued, and allowed the opportunity to become lifelong learners. I think that's really important, and I think it's important that when the students graduate from that field out there, that they know that we've given it our best effort, and they can get to where they want to go, having graduated from the Gloucester Public Schools. Thank you, and I'd certainly appreciate your vote on November seventh.
Wow. Well, thanks to all of you. This was, I think, a wonderful discussion. It's great to hear your different points of view, and I thank you. And this concludes our evening. Thanks to all of you out there, and see you all at the polls on November seventh.